Okay, welcome to this evening's meeting. Appreciate everyone being here. We're going to have our invocation by Pastor Emmett L. McCourt Jr., the Christ Savior Church in Morrow, Georgia. Pastor, as you come, I would just ask that you pray for the victims in Las Vegas. Pray for the family of the sheriff's deputy in Polk County. Pray for her family. And all those hundreds of people that are suffering as a result of the hurricanes, mudslides, and fires. So you know, as I think about it, between natural disasters and the hatred in some men's hearts, we need prayer.
Amen.
So please lead us. Please stand. It'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come this afternoon, this evening, Lord, grateful but heavy-hearted. Truly, Lord, you know all things. The Word tells us that you're Author and Finisher, Lord, of everything that we have, everything that we hope for, Lord, everything that we hope to be. Lord, but we know, Father, that you also knew that there was going to be these tragedies, Lord, in our life. Father, and we would turn toward you. We would look to you, Father, for the peace, the understanding, Lord. Father, the graciousness, Lord, Father, to give us, Father, the time to unite and pray for those that we don't know. It could have been us, Lord, right here in Clayton County. But you spared us, Lord, Father, as you let the water come over Houston, Lord. And you spared us, Lord, when the hurricane went over Florida. Lord, when it went over Puerto Rico, Lord, and those people are still suffering there in Haiti, Lord. Lord, Father, even last night in Las Vegas. Lord, we're praying, Lord, Father, for not only them, but also for Father the Officer who died in Polk County. Lord, we can't go anywhere but to you, Lord, on bending knees, Lord, with grateful hearts. Father, we ask, Father, for you to bless us, Lord. Give us an understanding of how to come together. For your Word tells us, Father, that if people who say they belong to you, Father, will humble themselves, will pray and seek your face, Lord, Father, you then, Father, will hear from heaven, Lord, and heal our land. Lord, we're depending on you. Bless this commission tonight, Lord. Bless this meeting, Lord. It means nothing without you, Lord, without your guidance, Lord, Father, without your plan. Fathers, in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Let us all say amen.
Amen.
Amen and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 3, 2017 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any member want to offer any amendments?
Madam Clerk, I'd like to hold Human Resources Items, Number One and Number Two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye. Opposed, is unanimous.
Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to ask, were there any further amendments?
Under Action Items, Item Number Eight regarding the Senior Services or Alzheimer's Service Center, I'd like to hold that as well.
I'm sorry, Mr. Vice Chair, you said Item Number Eight?
Yeah.
Under Action Items?
That's, um...
Under Action Items? Am I saying that right?
No, I think it's... Item Number Eight, those are Finance Budget Amendments.
I'm sorry, I was going off the electronic version.
What's he looking for? You mean Item Eighteen?
Yes, Item Number Eighteen, sorry.
All right, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. For one that passes.
Are there any further amendments?
Oh, and I have one more, I'm sorry. I'd like to add, as an emergency item, Resolution Twenty-Seven...
Seventy-one.
Twenty-Seven, Seventy-One, thank you, Commissioner. A moratorium for the Mountain View Tax Allocation District area of Clayton County.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous.
Are there any further amendments? Hearing none, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendments?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous.
Approval of the September Nineteen, Two Thousand Seventeen Regular Business Meeting amendments?
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous.
The Board would now hear a presentation on the MARTA Quarterly Briefings as presented by Mr. Benjamin Limmer, the Assistant General Manager of Planning.
Good evening. I obviously am not Mr. Benjamin Limmer, but he is here as part of my team to make a presentation this evening. My name is Elizabeth O'Neill. I am currently still Chief Counsel, have been at MARTA for quite some time, but I also am the interim General Manager, Chief Executive Officer, while our Board conducts a search for a permanent General Manager. As I think you all probably are aware of, at this time, Mr. Keith Parker is leaving MARTA. We hate to see that happen, but I intend to fill his shoes as best I can during this time that I serve as interim. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. I also wanted to mention that one of your Clayton Board Member Representatives, Mr. Jerry Griffin, is joining us here this evening, and Mr. Limmer will also present to talk about some of this Clayton-specific service amenities and other issues that we have going forward. And I also wanted to introduce our new Deputy General Manager, Mr. Robert Troop, who is here this evening also. I just very briefly wanted to touch on three areas this evening, to talk about the legislative outlook, the budget here at MARTA for our FY Eighteen year, as well as the State of Service. In talking about the legislative outlook, there are two areas I wanted to cover. I think I went right past the first one. To talk about the federal legislative priorities, there is currently a continuing resolution to fund the federal government and suspend the national debt ceiling through December eighth of 2017. Work continues on a mini-bus FY appropriations bill that would fund, fully fund, all mass transit account programs at a level of nine-point-seven-three billion, and also fund the capital investment grant program to the tune of one-point-seven-five billion, which is about five-hundred-and-forty-nine million dollars less than the FAST Act had authorized. There is currently no funding for the Tiger Program, and Congress has until December eighteenth to finalize this package.
So the eighteenth or the eighth?
I'm sorry?
The eighteenth or the eighth?
Eighth, sorry.
Right.
Thank you. The state legislative update is, the year is currently, as I'm sure you all know, also a House Commission on Transit Governance and Funding. This Commission commenced its work before the Fourth of July holiday. Mr. Parker, as MARTA's General Manager, and Ms. Rhonda Brigens, who is MARTA's Senior Director of External Affairs, but also the President of the Georgia Transit Association, both have seats on that Committee. Mr. Parker is in an ex officio role, so I will take over that seat on an interim basis. MARTA hosted a meeting of this Committee on August second, and there is a further meeting scheduled for October tenth at the ARC, at which state funding options for transit will be discussed. I'd also like to touch briefly on the budget for our FY Eighteen fiscal year. One of the really great stories as far as our financing that has occurred was a recent restructuring of some of our debt, which allowed us to save forty-eight million dollars over the next eighteen years from this debt restructuring. For our FY Eighteen adopted budget, we have net operating expenses this year of four-hundred-and-sixty-one million dollars. The total capital expenditures are four-hundred-and-thirty-four million dollars, with an FY Eighteen total budget of eight-hundred-and-ninety-six-point-four million dollars. The highlights for this year's budget is that we have not had a fair increase. For the fourth consecutive year, we continue to add service, as well as have major capital expenditures for state of good repair projects. Among them are the tunnel ventilation system, the fire protection system, as well as the purchase of new buses and new rail car. The state of good repair at this point is a primary concern so that we can maintain our patron and system safety. We take all of these infrastructure projects very seriously, and especially with some of the more recent news stories we've had about the infrastructure issues that other systems in the country have been experiencing. As far as our State of Service, another one of our, I think, good news stories that we have is about the 2016 Part One crime rate across the system. MARTA is the second, out of the top twelve systems, it has the second lowest Part One crimes. We achieved the reduction to three-point-five-seven per one million rides at this point, and that was fourteen percent below our four-point-one-five goal. We do incorporate CCTV on all of our buses and trains, and we are heavily invested in the sort of community-driven policing that deters crime. I think one of the examples of that is the police precinct that we have established here in Clayton County. Another ongoing or project that we recently completed was converting to a new, more secure Breeze Card. That conversion is complete. Our Breeze Cards are interoperable with counterpart systems in Cobb, Gwinnett, as well as Greta. One of the things with the new silver card that replaced the old card is that we also incorporate the logos from those systems onto the Breeze Card itself. As far as payment methods, another project that we will have coming soon is our mobile payment system. We are in the final phase of implementing this technology for both buses and rails, and we hope to have some pilot stations up and running within the next couple of months. We also began a relay bike partnership. We worked with the City of Atlanta to establish further last-mile connectivity. The first station that these bikes were installed with, it's at the Art Center Station. We currently offer bike options at several other of the stations, and we are going to be expanding that program even further. Right here in Clayton County, one of the things, fun things that we did was to participate in the, in Commissioner Warner's actually, STEAM Fair, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math. This was at the Clayton Rec Center on August fifth. MARTA participants from our engineering, IT, and government relations departments attended all of this event and worked with the children from grades six through grades twelve. One, I'm hitting that a little bit too soon, sorry. Another ongoing upgrade as far as our infrastructure is the Vertical Transportation Modernization Program. This is to overhaul the entire vertical transportation system, including elevators and escalators. It began on June nineteenth. This is an ongoing problem, excuse me, an ongoing program that has required some ongoing communications between MARTA and the folks that are putting the notices in our systems because several of these escalators could be out for certain, you know, weeks at a time or even months at a time as there is a complete revamping and re-installation of new escalators at certain of the stations. When they are complete, these elevators will be more aesthetically pleasing, they'll have graffiti-resistant walls, and have a more durable design. Escalators will also have new tread and handrails installed. And as you may also have seen recently, the Atlanta Street Car, MARTA will be, over the course of the next year, working through an agreement with the City of Atlanta to transfer the operations of the Street Car to MARTA. We're working closely not only with the city, but also with GDOT and the FTA, as there is a great deal of FTA grant money involved in the Street Car. And we hope during the course of that year, our primary concern, again, will be to address all of the safety and operational concerns that are involved with the operation of the Street Car. And with that, I would ask Mr. Limmer to come up and talk to you further about some of the Clayton County-specific ongoing initiatives.
Okay, great, thank you, Liz. Moving on. Okay, so Bus Stop Amenities Program. This just provides you an overview of what the existing landscape looks like with regard to bus stops and bus shelters throughout the MARTA service area. We have over, well over nine thousand bus stops throughout our system, about six hundred and fifty now shelters, eighty-four benches, and then twenty-four semi-seats. Semi-seats are little, little metal seats that are attached to a bus stop sign. But throughout 2017 and going into 2018, MARTA is launching a very exciting, comprehensive bus shelter program where we're looking to install approximately two hundred bus shelters across our service areas, so we're very excited about that. Over the next sixty to ninety days, we're actually going to be installing the initial twenty-five bus shelters throughout our system. And then specific to Clayton County, we actually released an advertising contract request for proposals to both manage the installation of the advertising bus shelters within Clayton County, as well as the maintenance of those bus shelters, which does, of course, include cleaning and emptying of the trash receptacles.
Thank you.
What's that?
Said, "Thank you."
Working on it. I regretfully would inform you that we did not receive any competitive proposals, so the team is going to circle back quickly this week to organize and figure out how we get a response from the marketplace, so stay tuned on that. So it's not, okay. So Bus Service, cited also about the amount of transit riders we see within Clayton County, over fifteen thousand bus riders per day. You see the nine bus routes listed up here. One of the most successful MARTA bus routes in our entire system is, serves Clayton County or south. The Route One-Ninety-Six, the Terra Boulevard Route, sees well over thirty-five-hundred riders per day, and as you can imagine, that being a very busy bus route, many of the new shelter locations are going to be serving that very high-volume bus route in the future. The other thing about the Route One-Ninety-Six is it certainly bodes well for the future of high-capacity transit, or the potential for high-capacity transit, maybe a commuter rail or something like that going forward. So that really shows that there is in very much a high ridership potential for a rail line serving Clayton County. And speaking of that, this map shows our regional expansion program. MARTA is very actively working on four rail extension projects, one of which, of course, is a commuter rail line extending south from the East Point MARTA Rail Station, heading north-south through Clayton County. Specific to your Clayton County High Capacity Transit Study, we are launching, it's a federally required planning process that we launched last year, I think you're fairly familiar with it. The reason why it's required by the feds is MARTA does intend on pursuing capital grant dollars through the federal government. And the study is really looking at two things. What type of transit service will best serve the future needs of residents, stakeholders, and businesses within Clayton County? And then what specific corridor or road is the best place to put that high-capacity transit project? And at the end of this planning study, there's going to be what's called a locally preferred alternative, which is basically your project. So it goes from point A to point B along this corridor, and it's this specific type of transit. We will undoubtedly come back to you with more details as we get further in our planning process. Also specific to the Clayton County High Capacity Transit Study, within our Fourteenth Amendment with Clayton County, we did have in there to form a Citizens Advisory Group. We meet approximately every quarter, it's about fifteen members. Their role is to really to provide as much input as possible on both the technical aspects, but also the public outreach and stakeholder outreach components of that study. Really serve as a sounding board for the MARTA team to bring as much about the potential for high-capacity transit to them for review, and last but certainly not least, serve as our advocates for the future of public transportation in your county. As part of our efforts, we did recently take a scouting trip to look at a variety of transit types. In June, we visited Southern California, three particular public transit agencies and operations within Southern California, one in San Diego, then we went a little bit north to Oceanside, and then ended our scouting trip in Los Angeles. On that trip, we were able to explore a whole variety of transit options, everything from local bus, to bus rapid transit, to light rail, to heavy rail, commuter rail, and even took an Amtrak ride. We are looking at a future trip later this fall to another city. So with that, that concludes my portion of the presentation. I'm going to call up Ms. O'Neill, and we'll close out and take questions.
Thank you. Just want to go back one. The last thing that I really wanted to talk about was that the APTA, Twenty-Seveneen Annual Meeting and Expo, is being hosted this year by MARTA. It starts next Sunday, October eighth, runs through the eleventh. It will be at the Georgia World Congress Center. There are expected attendance of approximately fourteen thousand people. There are seven-hundred-and-fifty companies represented from eighty countries, and they will be exhibiting their products, included over sixty buses on the floor of the convention center. So we're excited to be hosting this event. And that's essentially our quarterly briefing. I would be happy to take any questions that you all might have.
Okay, are there any questions for Ms. O'Neill?
Yes. Go on, no, you go on, please.
Commissioner, have it.
Well, I, yes, I have a question. I've received a couple calls from employees at the Kaiser Building on Mount Zion, and in reference to the bus service schedule. And I think something has been changed. I don't have that with me either. The bus no longer leaves East Point and come to the Kaiser Building in Morrow, or, anyway, the timing is bad, you know, for those employees, and they've had to get other modes of transportation because evidently it leaves later than it did before, before they could get to the building by seven a.m. And now that's really impossible for them.
I've not, we can be able to, I mean, I know Ms. Limmer can check into that and see...
Certainly, I'd be happy to look into that. We have not made any schedule or route modifications to the Route One-Ninety-Six in recent months, but I'll certainly look into that and follow up with you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. My first question about the advisory group for the rail. I know when we first got MARTA here, and sometime later, the Commissioners, we appointed those people. You said you tried to meet quarterly. How many meetings have you had, and how, really how active have they been?
So we have met three times and also conducted a scouting trip, so approximately, you know, four if you count the scouting trip. As far as participation, I'd say there's been about, you know, about half of the members show for our, for our citizens' group meetings. They're often held on a weekday night here, actually, so...
At, in this office?
Yeah.
Okay. And also, of those two-hundred-plus shelters that you talked about, how many do you, do you know how many will be actually in Clayton County?
I can follow up with you on that, on that breakdown. The way that the shelter installation works is we look at number of boardings per day, and our current threshold is if there's forty-plus boardings per day, that particular location is eligible for a shelter. There are special circumstances, you know, areas of need, senior homes, things like that. Also, in 2018, MARTA is going to take a look at that particular forty-plus boardings per day threshold. We're going to actually go out for public review to see if forty-plus boardings per day is the appropriate threshold to have for a shelter installation, so...
Thank you.
I'll follow up with you on the number within Clayton, though.
Sure, thank you. And I do understand that each stop cannot have a shelter. Lastly, who is the contact, and you don't have to tell us publicly if you follow up. I know Chris is gone, we used to communicate with him a lot.
John.
That'd be you. Okay, all right, gotcha, just wanted to make sure, okay. Okay, thank you. And also, too, I've just had a few complaints about people saying the buses are late and people being late to work and that type thing. Thank you.
Certainly follow up on those.
Okay, I have one other question, and maybe I missed it, but do you all have an update on possible rail for Clayton? I've heard, you know, talks in the media regarding Stone Crests and some other places, but I never hear anything regarding Clayton as far as rail is concerned.
So we are actively working on the rail transit study. Right now, we're in the planning phase, that particular, since we want to compete for federal funds, that particular planning phase can take a couple of years. We're approximately twenty-five percent of the way through. I do want to note, we do plan on hosting a variety of public outreach activities. We're actually going to go visit some high-volume activity locations, festivals, things like that, throughout Clayton County over the next four to six weeks. Also, we are going to do a round of public meetings. I believe those are tentatively scheduled for November prior to the holiday season. So you should see some more activity regarding the Clayton County Rail Study in the coming months.
Okay, and thank you all for participating in my back-to-school back in July. I appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you so much for your presentation and for all that you do.
The Board would now consider requests of Director of Central Services, Carol Rogers.
Please take them again.
Okay. Good evening, Chairman, Board. I have three items to present tonight on behalf of Central Services. The first item is Recommendation for Award of ITP, I'm sorry, ITB Seventeen-Dash-Seventy-Eight, which is Landfill Earthing Material Services for Clayton County, Georgia. The Recommendation for Award is to the... The recommendation for award is to the responsive and responsible bidder meeting the specifications, that's C and C Lovejoy LLC located in Lovejoy, Georgia. Funding is available through the Landfield Enterprise Fund Account. Next item is Recommendation for Governmental and Affiliated Entity Purchase, and that's seventeen dash one eighty-four. The recommendation is to utilize the Georgia Statewide Contract for the purchase of one massive transit vehicle bus for the Senior Service Department from Alliance Bus Group, Inc., located in College Park, Georgia, in the total amount of ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-two cents, as requested by the Transportation and Development Fleet Division. Funding is available through the two thousand fifteen SPOSS Funds. Next item is Recommendation for Governmental and Affiliated Entity Purchase, Statewide Contract seventeen dash one eighty-five. The recommendation is to utilize the Georgia Statewide Contract for the installation of crate myrtles, mulch, and watering for Pinola Road from Cardo Global League Engineering Facility Management LLC located in Fayetteville, Georgia, in the total amount of sixty-three thousand, four hundred twelve dollars and eighty-five cents, as requested by the Corrections Department. Funding is available through the department's general funds, and I request for you to approve the above recommendations, authorize the chairman his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contracts, and to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budgets accordingly.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on either item? Hearing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Board would now consider the request of Chief Financial Officer, Ramona Bivens.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. I have two items for your consideration this evening. Both are for the Fire Department. Budget Amendment two dash ten, excuse me, is to appropriate funds from the Fire Fund's fund balance in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars to provide for mold, litigation, remodeling for Fire Station Number Six. And Budget Amendment two dash eleven is for the Fire, Fire Department and the General Fund, to amend the budget to provide funding to be a Fire Station Number Fifteen in Lake City, in the amount of two million, five hundred thousand dollars, with half of the funding coming from the Fire Fund's general fund balance, and the other half from the General Fund's fund balance to be repaid back using a portion of the tax revenue collected from the military assess in Lake City for their fire fund, for their fire service.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
The Board would now move to item number ten. This is the Public Hearing on the Stream Buffer Variance Request for the Lake Spivey Civic Association, County Attorney Jack Hancock.
Come on up, sir. Are you the app?
Mr. Turner?
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Turner, if, if there isn't, if there isn't opposition, do we, are we required to have them present?
No, sir, you, you need to call a public hearing to order and determine if there is any conver, any discuss, anybody who wants to speak, and then if not, then you can take it to the Board.
Alright, again, we're calling a public hearing to order. Is there anybody in opposition to this buffer variance hearing? Please step up and speak. Anybody in opposition? Alright, Commissioner Emerson?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Oh, second to motion, is there, are there any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we're gonna take it, take it out of there, we're gonna close that public meeting?
Oh. Take a motion to close the public meeting.
So moved.
All sucking it, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Please take them all together unless Commissioner wants one singled out. Hearing none, please.
I have six resolutions, uh, five department requests, and one remission order, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, Resolution two thousand seventeen sixty-six is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter, enter into Articles of Agreement with certain community charitable organizations, governmental agencies, and professional service providers located and conducting business in Clayton County to authorize the chairman to execute the agreements and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary, to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. If I could point out that the Finance Department has submitted a substitute attachment, which you all have and I think are aware of, but it is different than the one that was originally submitted with the resolution. Ordinance number two thousand seventeen sixty-seven is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia, as amended specifically Code of Clayton County, Georgia, Part Two, Chapter Two, Administration, Article One in General, Section Two Dash Six, Employee Travel, Subsection B, to specify the authority of the Chief Financial Officer as it relates to employee travel requests, repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions, and to provide severability to provide an effective date and for other purposes. Resolution two thousand seventeen sixty-nine is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Clayton County, Georgia, approving the issuance of revenue bonds by the Housing Authority of Clayton County for the benefit of Hampstead-Southwood Partners LP and for other purposes, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution two thousand seventeen seventy is a resolution of unanimous support by the Board of Commissioners of Clayton County, Georgia, of the efforts by county staff and the Development Authority of Clayton County regarding the Amazon HQ Two Project, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution two thousand seventeen seventy-one is a resolution adopting a moratorium on the acceptance of all applications for development or building permits for review and consideration by the Clayton County Department of Community Development as they relate to existing or proposed properties within the Tax Allocation District Number Five, Mountain View, in Clayton County, to be in effect from enactment through and including March thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, to adopt an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Item number sixteen on your agenda is a request by the Department of Transportation and Development that the Board of Commissioners authorize the execution of, of an amendment to the pact or performance agreement for comfort from train agreement for maintenance activities. The maintenance agreement covers the landfill's gas well field and the power generation plant, as well as five boilers located at the H R Banky Complex. Further, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary, to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item seventeen is a request from the Senior Services Department that the Board of Commissioners approve the special facility use request submitted by Senator Gail Davenport for the use of space at the J. Charlie Griswold Senior Center on Saturday, October fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, from three p.m. to seventeen, seven p.m., for the purpose of hosting a senior citizens dinner, no financial impact to the county government and Clayton County Senior Services Center. Item number nineteen is a Parks and Recreation Department request that the Board of Commissioners approve the request submitted by Pi Gamma Lambda Chapter of the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, Inc., to utilize Clayton County Parks and Recreation vans and employees as drivers for their two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Alpha Mentoring Academy field trips conducted on behalf of the mentees. The department's recommendation is as follows: Staff, ten dollars per hour per employee; fuel, fifty-eight cents per mile, calculated at the end of the day, and dates of travel are outlined on the schedule that was attached to the request. Item number twenty is a request from Clayton County Planning and Zoning Department that the Board of Commissioners approve a, for a consultant to provide professional planning services through the Office of Planning, Zoning, and Sustainability, and to resolve planning issues for a professional level of customer service and technical expertise. And item twenty-one is a request from the Elections and Registration Department that the Board of Commissioners approve the opening of two advanced voting locations for the House District Sixty special election to be held on November seventh, two thousand seventeen. The following additional van, advanced locate, voting locations and hours are requested: The Virginia Burton Gray Recreation Center, Monday through Friday, October thirteenth through November third of two thousand seventeen, from eight a.m. to five p.m.; October twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, from eight a.m. to five p.m.; and the Forest Park Library on Main Street in Forest Park during the same dates and hours. There are estimated ninety-six hundred voters in House District Sixty in Clayton County that can cast ballots in this special election. And finally, we have an order of remission in case number two thousand sixteen C R O one eight one four F F, the State Court of Clayton County, in the case of State of Georgia versus Darris Gabriella, in the amount of seventeen hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Did I miss something, or number sixty-eight?
Did I miss something?
Yeah, sixty-eight. And, um...
Did I miss sixty-eight?
Two thousand seventeen and sixty-eight, yes.
I'm sorry, pardon me. Uh, sixty-eight is a resolution authorizing Commissioner Sona Singleton Gregory to partner with Zeta Phi Alpha Sorority, Inc., Sigma Omega Zeta Chapter, to approve a special facility use request to allow ongoing use of meeting space at the Carl Rodenizer Recreation Center for the Pearls Hope Mentoring Program, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to provide an effective date of the resolution and for other purposes. Sorry, Commissioner.
Alright, is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, we do need an executive session on litigation and personnel matters.
And property.
Mr. Chair.
Alright, sir. Commissioner.
Yes, before we go to the next item, I'd just like to acknowledge, we do have tonight the Sigma Omega, Sigma Omega Zeta Chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority here. If you ladies were staying, and can we give them a minute just to say something? They're gonna be doing this girls mentoring at the recreation center, kinda like the Pi Gamma Lambda Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha's doing. They, Alpha Phi Alpha, the Pi Gamma Lambda Chapter, they have a waiting list. So, there is definitely a need in the county, and I really appreciate this, ladies, this is just a small portion of them, so they will say.
Ms. Cox, if you'd like to say a few words. I know I put you on the spot.
Yes, I always love to say a few words.
We know.
Um, we would like to thank Commissioner Gregory for partnering with us for our girls mentoring group, and we hope to make a difference to girls within the county in high school. So, next year you will see us again, and we will be doing it again year after year.
If you could, please introduce yourself, please.
Oh, I thought everybody knows me. My name is Sid Cox, and I am a resident of Clayton County.
Thank you, and ladies, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Alright, next we have our board appointments, and I'm gonna ask the board members to wait to be recognized if you have a board appointment before stating your recommendation. The first appointment is going to be for the Tourism Authority Board to fill the unexpired term of Dr. Darrell McCullough, who resigned. The term expires on September first, twenty eighteen. It's a full board appointment. Are there any recommendations?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, have you recognized me?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Alright. Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to recommend Ms. Gina McCombs to fill that vacancy.
Is there a second?
And second?
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Second appointment is to the Mental Health Developmental Disabilities and Addictive Diseases Community Service Board, to fill the expiring term of Bernie Boemaster. The term is for three years, expiring on October seventh, twenty twenty. Full board appointment. Any recommendations? Now, I did speak with, no, that's the one I did not speak with. Are there any recommendations? We'll hold that appointment. Next appointment is also for the Mental Health Developmental Disabilities and Addictive Diseases Community Service Board, fill the expiring term of Brian Flowers. Term is for three years, expiring on October seventh, twenty, twenty twenty. Full board appointment. Any recommendations? I did speak with Mr. Flowers, he does want to stay on the board, I'll make that a rec, uh, motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Last appointment is for also the Mental Health Developmental Disabilities and Addictive Diseases Community Service Board, to fill the expiring term of Martin Thompson. The term is three years, expiring on October seventh, twenty twenty. Full board appointment. Any recommendations? I did speak with Mr. Thompson, he does wanna remain on the board. I'll make that a motion. Is there a second?
So moved. A second.
Probably moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. I have a, can I have a motion to go into executive session for property litigation?
For litigation and personnel, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
What the clerk just said. Is there a motion?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
We have two settlement agreement and releases for your consideration. One is in the case of Cory Gale Davis versus Clayton County. And the Clayton County Water Authority, we've been able to resolve that matter for ten thousand dollars, resulting from a flooding incident that happened on multiple occasions in two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen. And the second is the case of Herbert Perkins versus Michael Thrasher, uh, in case involving a, uh, the attempt or the arrest of Mr. Perkins and entry into his house by Mrs. Thrasher that occurred in, uh, excuse me, I had the date in front of me, two thousand thirteen, uh, two thousand thirteen, correct. You previously authorized us to settle both of these cases. We have been able to do so and have the settlement agreements for your approval and placed on the record.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All sucking it. Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, after conducting three interviews of highly qualified people for the director for Buildings and Maintenance, I'd like to make a recommendation to the Board that we hire Mr. Benjamin Hopkins at a post, at the posted salary of ninety thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars annually. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
How you gonna suck in your own motion? All sucking it. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.